Then it's not quite the same anymore.
It's very true.
Alright, we'll go ahead and get started. Call the, uh, Sept- or September?
Either.
January 18th, 2023 Select Board Meeting to Order. I want to start the meeting off by, um, I put together a very short statement that we can file for, for the Select Board. Um, just that I'm stepping down as the Chair effective tonight. Um, and gonna remain on the Select Board and intending to still run, um, uh, for reelection at Town Meeting Day. Uh, but just wanted to, you know, I need to lessen my load a little bit at home and with everything going on. So, um, with that, I think I'm gonna open it up for the Select Board to, uh, decide who of the two of you guys wants to take over as the Chair of the Select Board. So we can appoint you and then move forward from there.
I make a motion to appoint Tristan Bond as Chair of the Select Board.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I accept, I guess.
Um, and I'm happy to stand as the Assistant Chair to help covering your assets, so.
Good, alright.
If they need a vote.
Do we need a vote?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, I was in favor of appointing Tristan at the Chair and I'll be the Assistant Chair.
Aye.
I was in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, Tristan, it's your meeting, take it over.
Okay. So, um, so we're done with that, so we're gonna review and approve the minutes for, see, I gotta get on board here.
January 4th.
January 4th meeting.
Um. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for January 4th.
Okay.
Second.
It was seconded, uh, we did receive an email on the minutes, uh, from Lees about making a change in, in the statement or something that was made.
Yep.
Um, so we, we felt as that they were our Select Board meetings minutes, so.
I feel that, uh, based off of her, her email and what's written in the, in the minutes that I think we sufficiently covered what her statement that was made at the meeting is. And I'm happy to have the minutes remain as written.
And they are Select Board minutes.
Correct.
So there are minutes that we approve for the meeting and.
Yep, the Board itself.
The Board itself and they're just a, a general of our meeting, not specific.
Yeah.
Possible.
Correct.
So, I guess that's all I had for, for, uh, minutes. This is a session on that. Alright. If everybody's all set with the minutes, can bring it to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Alright. Adjustment to agenda, do we have any adjustments to agenda?
I think so.
Dorothy. Okay. No problem.
We'll, let's put. You want it right up at the top or at the top of the department updates, Dorothy? We'll put you right up at the top.
Down?
Sure.
Okay, let's do Dorothy, we're gonna put Dorothy to the top for.
Perfect.
Um, so I sent in our request to PBR for redetermination of the COB, um, that went out prior last week. And we should hear back when they are gonna set up a meeting, kind of look at the processes that I had questioned. And apparently, um, it'll be, we won't get a letter until July, but it'll say we actually have to do a reappraisal. So that's.
So we don't really, we still don't really know?
No, we still don't really know.
Okay.
Anticipate that we have to?
Yes. That would say seventy-five to ninety percent chance that we're gonna have to.
Well, hopefully you're wrong, but.
Maybe not wrong.
And we're not, you said you're not expecting a response to confirm that till July?
July is when they send out their letters, yes. Um, which I didn't realize. I think Zach had asked about, um, the possibility of grants or money towards doing a reappraisal. Um, and I asked about that and at this point, they're trying to get more money through the legislature. They've tried for several years, but they think this might be a good year. They have that since so many towns need to reappraise. At this point, you get eight dollars and fifty cents per parcel per year. Um, and there isn't any other money, there isn't any other grants or anything, it's only what we get for the per parcel amount. Um, one of the things, I actually listened to a, I got a ballot meeting from Vermont Association of Listeners and Assessors last week. And, um, there were several topics and one of them was talking about the reappraisal and the number of towns that need to do it. And one of the things that was said was that the towns should plan on paying for half of the reappraisal themselves. So that kind of gives you a ballpark on what we should be putting aside.
And what was the total, what were you, what were you, what are we, what are we figuring on that's going on?
I don't know if I have those minutes with me, I think we have, um, we've got like, we will have like seventy thousand in the air by the time we get the money in February and the money from.
But we were thinking a total of a hundred thousand, give or take?
Yes, for reappraisal. Um, and they're talking somewhere between six and seven years, we should be thinking about doing a reappraisal every six or seven years.
Jesus.
But, um, and but they are still leaning kind of towards ten, if that works for towns. Um, so that's about all I know about the reappraisal, I think at this point. I gave you a copy of this letter from Cardy Graphics, pictures of our, um, tax camps and all along. And down at the bottom, um, basically next year, our, um, amount of budget for that will be three thousand dollars instead of twenty-four hundred. Um, in 2019, they changed the base rate to three thousand for all new clients. So we've had like five years, being grandfathered to twenty-four hundred. Um, and you just, we'd already paid the renewal for this year, so it won't start till next year. So, and that, that's, you know, it's excellent that they gave us, you know, gave us this information, um, at that time.
Yeah, that's well advanced, that's great.
Um, and I did ask if the three thousand was, um, I don't know if I cover what they think, we may have the eighteen hundred that we've got in the budget now for Vermont, for transition. And I heard right back from Franco, who's the owner, and he said, no, this isn't, this has nothing to do with that. And they still are hoping that there won't be a, they may not need to use the eighteen hundred, but they won't be, know for sure till they flip the switch and everything gets transferred, so.
Okay.
Um, so the eighteen hundred is still, needs to be out there and then the three thousand will be next year.
Okay.
So, um, I think that's all I had.
Okay. Thank you, Dorothy.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Thanks, Dorothy.
Uh, so, any, okay. Updates, do we have anything?
Yeah, we did receive a permit, um, from the COB, NEK COB, for the spot down by the solar panels.
Okay.
So Dan has, um, twenty-three of us have figured out exactly where they're talking and Dan's checked it out and approved it.
Okay.
Has to do the normal two-week wait, but everything's going along, he says that's the spot they're gonna do. So cement pad, well, I guess, like he said, they're almost trying, gonna try to do that now with this cement pad.
Yeah. Oh, really?
If the weather stays somewhat.
We'll do it Friday.
Well, as soon as they go to do it, the weather's gonna shut down, but.
So, but anyway, so that, that's a good floor.
Okay, good. How about infrastructure drainage project update, anything on that?
A lot of back and forth I've seen enforcement, so Lisa, you told me that there was something that I needed to review, but I couldn't find.
Right, so I thought it kind of voided.
I couldn't figure out where, what, cause I, I, well, between Nate and Sean and back and forth, it's.
That is, the highlight is what they're wanting you to clarify. Um, and we also need clarity on the positions. We need, um, who is going to be the official authorized to take action as required for the grant, first position? And then second position, doesn't need to be names, it just needs to be your title.
Okay, so Chair and Vice Chair would be sufficient.
If that's what you guys decide on and then title official, who is the custodian of funds? Which I think that should be Select Board because you actually handle the actual budget. And then title of official authorizing the sign checks. Now, our policy is Kerry signs the checks, I produce them, she signs them, so it's a dual thing.
Which would be the same pretty much protocol as what we're, we're used to.
So you just have to decide who's the first two and then, um, that has to be termed in by.
I mean, I think.
You put it in, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, does that make sense to you guys?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Chair and Vice Chair.
That's good, no, that's fine, yep, that'll work.
Um, then the custodian of funds, you just put Select Board?
Select Board, cause we would approve this expenditure of the fund, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Good. You're reading updates for.
Yeah, I'm just looking at this, I missed this on the email.
It's something for, um, USDA, Sean wants to meet person the week of January 30th. And I asked him for early morning because you all work and he said he'd let us know as soon as he knew, he's thinking Tuesday of the January 30th week.
That would be the 31st, yep.
Okay, so.
That would work for me and I can make that work.
Alright, so.
Like any, um, I mean.
That's what I asked and he'll let us confirm.
Yep.
Um, so then the item three, you need, he needed clarification from you on that, so.
Oh, item thirteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, the one that's, given town officials have been copying on all exchanges on the SFO to be, um, it's, yeah, so we are the owners, so anything that requires our response should come from one of the three of us.
Okay.
And I've been copied on all of it, so I can, I can follow up with this one.
Okay. Um, and then Nate has inquired, I don't know if Zach, you were on some of these emails, but Nate wants to make sure the guidelines for proper insurance, when the bids go out and when requirements are set. So I've been talking with VLCT, you know, our standard, you know, contract and certificate of insurance and all those. Doesn't, Nate doesn't think it's quite enough because it's such a big project that we need to consult with Gavin on this. So I was thinking with your blessing, I could email what Nate had sent me and see what Gavin or Sean, um, at Gavin Reed's office would send out.
Have you had success, would it be better coming from one of the Select Board members or?
Well, I, Sean responds.
Yeah.
So what, so what is he concerned about?
That our levels aren't high enough.
For insurance?
Yeah.
Most of these contractors though, that are gonna be bidding on this have well beyond because any other project.
So, I mean, how do you just suggest that we just need to communicate when we put, during the bid process, what insurance level we need to require them to have?
I think so.
Well, Nate just was.
Well, there's a standard, a state, if it was a state project, they, they have high standards, so as long as it.
I mean, I think that's Nate's specialty, you know what I mean? This is, this is the first time we've done it, but he's done it before, you know what I mean?
Right, so I'm just saying that state has, as long as they follow state, which we would, we would, that would, state qualifications.
Did Nate or Sean indicate what that level was compared to where we normally were, our normal levels?
Not really, we were kind of going back and forth.
So, could we just check in with Nate and see, I'm assuming he knows?
Yeah, I would ask Nate and Sean what.
That we would follow Vermont.
Yeah, whatever.
He thought the attorney needed to be, just, this needed to be discussed with the attorney.
Cause I don't even know that the attorney's who we.
I don't think he's gonna know, yeah.
It's just certain of the CYA.
Yeah, yeah, but, I mean, the question would be.
And I stopped talking to VLCT and they said talk to your attorney, they didn't want to.
We'll check in Gavin and, yeah, I was just thinking, we'd make it simple, as long as we follow Vermont guidelines and.
Or whatever requisite, I mean, again, the question would be, what are the requisites that USDA are required? That my eyes, I mean, if USDA is saying that we, somebody needs five million dollars in insurance coverage for the project, that's what it should be. I mean, that's why I'm uncertain of why I would need more.
Yeah, that's what, we need to change.
I don't know.
Yeah, I have to get him to look at it and he'll say that looks fine or not, with Nate's concerns and.
Yep.
So I think that's all I really had about the USDA update, but, you know, Zach, you've been seeing all the emails, it's a long list.
A lot of back and forth.
Nate called me and said, you know, it was like fifteen items and Nate said, don't worry about it, I'm working on it. Cause a lot of it was, you know.
Big engineering stuff.
Yeah.
It's all, it's all his, a lot of it's his stuff, yeah. A lot of the back and forth too has been about the historic preservation documentation, et cetera, so.
Right.
You know, what, what I haven't noticed is Sean is right on top of his emails on everything, so he's acknowledging receipt back to Nate and, and us on anything that we requested, so.
Right.
Which, and I'll try to get, I should try to stay up to date on all this, cause I wasn't through with this project, but if something happened, you know, yeah, you know, whatever, so.
And it was eighty-five page, and.
Oh, yeah, I printed, I should, it's on my desk, eighty-five pages of USDA stuff.
Oh, God, I don't.
Of the project, no, we don't have to complete it, but it's just.
Just like, you do this and you do that, is that like when you go and you sign all these?
Yeah.
I expect, I, I sign off on all these terms and conditions that I didn't really, or come on, I fluff it.
I felt like you're trying to put it in the file.
Yeah, yeah, that's good, that's fine, yeah.
So it's all up there if you wanna skim through it.
It's a page turner, I'm sure.
Okay, Goric, Grant update.
Um, still, I don't think we've seen anything from Mike or Mike.
I think I read that they received a.
An agreement?
Draft agreement or some, you know, not official.
Not the real, but.
Yep, but we still haven't seen a, like a draft of the letter that they wanted to.
Not the full agreement, to make him feel comfortable and formal.
Okay. So, no, but they said, Mike had said that they wanted to send a letter out to the.
The letter is letters.
But they were gonna send it to us to review and that, that hasn't been done yet, so.
They haven't reached out to you, Dorothy, for a list?
No, or addresses or anything, yeah.
Um, you can do that online too, can't you? If you're tech savvy enough, you can get on.
Oh, you have some techs on, you don't have to get bothered.
Gary might be able to.
Or my, I guess.
Yeah, or my, or my, all three of them are pretty technologically savvy, so, alright.
Yep. Okay, good hazard migration plan?
Mitigation.
Mitigation.
What, what is that?
I thought we all received, uh, two more draft sections to review and send back the information. So it was parts three and four, so, like, I skimmed through it.
But you talked about that the other day on the phone, right?
Yeah, and they, they're working on it.
So that.
Right, it was a thing that started, we started holding it and then closed it, it kind of fell far, they got all the info to Alaska. And then we finally got someone to.
So do we need to do anything as a board at this point?
Well, you should review, I looked at it, it's all different.
Who's that coming from?
I don't know, um, no, that Paul Luciano.
Can't remember Paul, somebody, Mike Luciano.
Okay.
So that just came, that part, it just went today, I think.
Okay.
And that's the part of where we would get more FEMA money if we had this in place, yeah.
How much more FEMA money?
It's like seven percent to fifty or twelve percent.
Okay, we'll just check it and see if it.
Well, we're very close, this guy has done a lot of work now, so I think, I think we're almost there.
Okay.
Alright.
So nothing we have to really, we'll just wait to hear more.
Should have a look at it and then, yeah, just have an idea what it says.
Okay.
Yep.
Assuming that you're gonna approve it, so.
Right. Okay, barman updates, highway, have you heard anything?
Aye. Got a, uh, phone call from a resident on the class four road that was concerned.
Okay.
Um, I.
Class four road?
Yep.
Okay.
So his neighbor was running skitter up and down the road and he was worried that it was.
I have heard something about this, yep.
So, I called the road commissioner and asked him if he could go out and take a look at his convenience and he went out and took a look at it and said, in his opinion, there wasn't anything. It wasn't a problem, so.
Which is a class four road, so it's.
That's, which is what I told the guy, but I said if somebody's tearing it all up, then we'll have to do something, but.
And one more thing on the, on the road agent, um, I was thinking, we're not having him come in every meeting and whatever and sit through the whole meeting, but I think it would be nice to have like an update, an email or something monthly, just nothing going on, something going on, this is what's what. Obviously, if there's a problem, he'll call one of us or show up at a meeting, but it would be nice to just have an update by email.
Monthly update if he's not gonna be in here.
Yeah, so, I was gonna just talk to him about that if you guys thought that was.
Nope, that seems like a good idea.
Get an update.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, like you said, even if it's nothing to report, yeah.
Something.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, he is an elected official, um, and, you know, as an elected official, it would be nice for us to get some sort of communication on, on the happening, even if it's a mild update on the happening of the highway.
It's also a significant part of the town budget.
Exactly.
You know, so, not that we have any concerns.
Should have just a quick update, once a month, I think would be great.
Yep.
Okay, cool, treasurer.
Okay, just a few things, um, I just want to clarify and ask the chairman, um, who will be the first signar for signing orders in specifically payroll? Um, it used to be Zach was to come in every week to sign off on payroll, um, and then I think it, I don't know who the second was.
I'm always in it, I'm always calculating.
Tristan, okay, just one of the kind of.
I think, I think that's one of those responsibilities that probably should live with the Chair position, so, I think that's fine.
Or if the Chair wasn't available and somebody else did come in, whatever, but I'm, I'm maybe on the.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Um, and we're working, um, steadily on the town report, it needs to be printed January 30th. Um, Select Board should set up a time to review it before we cement it to the printer.
Okay.
Now, we won't have it all ready for you to actually look at it, you know, just it, like a couple days before we print it, so, I sent it, so.
Which, do we wanna discuss that, would, would, tonight at the end?
Yeah, we'll put this, yeah, so we, I did, I did put together a, a draft letter for the Select Board members to review and we can kind of edit or whatever, so we can do that at the end of the meeting, but that'll go for that, but. Uh, what, what date do we need to get it to the printers?
It's a Monday, so, you know, I can meet you guys down here, you know, if we had, I assume we'd have it all ready for viewing Friday, um, you know, if I can meet you down.
I'm gonna be Sunday by midnight.
Alright, I'll meet you down here.
I'll, I'll bring coffee, don't worry.
We, we did talk again about that, but it's just.
When, when, but, when do we norm, what date do we normally get it out ahead of, so that it gets mailed out to everybody?
January.
They just have to have it sent to them by January 30th.
By January 30th.
Send it January 30th, they.
Got it, it's already the eighteenth, so we're gonna.
Um, so would you like the all four to get together and look at it with you and then they'll have to call the meeting if that's the case, or?
Um, it's how you want to do it, you know, I just want, yeah, but you really, it won't really be ready, you know.
Yeah. They do that Thursday before, or that Monday, actually, Thursday.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
I mean, they, yeah.
Well, we're here for the, the USDA meeting on, well, no, the 30th.
Yeah.
So, yeah, probably the Thursday before, whatever date that is, it's the 20th, no, the 26th.
Twenty-sixth is the Thursday.
Yeah, so we, we should review it at some point that week.
Okay.
As long as we all look at it by the 26th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can each come in, I can leave it right in there, you can.
That'd be fine, too.
Yep.
From the 26th to the 30th of that, hopefully, weekend.
If you see a lot of changes, you gotta.
Email, yeah.
Call, yeah.
Go over it and give it time to change it.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Don't wait until Sunday night.
Right, please not, no. Um, and I know you've heard about my SAM.gov renewal, um, I worked on it almost every other day, we're Zoom calls with this lovely lady from state of Vermont. Um, but finally on, which yesterday, we got it submitted. And so now we just have to wait for two emails from federal government to email me back and then we go from there, but we're very close.
Good, nice shot.
Been very, very stressful.
Yep.
But she's, this lady is super, we get, she gets right on my computer and we do it all together and, but it's very tricky. Kind of get a letter from the Secretary of State, um, what, where it's spelled that way, yeah, yeah. So we had to get a letter from the Secretary of State and to say when we were first starting, or the charter and, and, um, they spelled GROTON, G-R-O-T-T-O-N.
Really?
And she looked, spent like another day looking for the change, when it got changed to G-R-O-T-O-N, can't find anything.
So we had to spell it wrong all this time?
The even been spelling it wrong.
So do we need to submit a change?
My office says G-R-O-T-T-O-N.
T-T-O, right?
So, I, I don't think it's gonna be a hiccup, but she was really nervous about it because she didn't have the other paper to show that it went to one T.
It's first time.
That's so, these things can.
So we gotta change everything.
Yeah. Uh, Kerry and I took a man to our notary training to renew our notary license, it was two hours, um, we got that done. Um, there's an EMT contract that Brenda has, um, from FAST has asked and has explained to them and she thought Aaron could even explain it, cause I'm just a messenger. Um, and the town mowing contract with Chris Bruce is in there for you all to sign, there's more open POs to sign and that's it.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Talking about training going into both of you, have you guys looked into, done any of the First Amendment that's been all over the BLTC staff?
I saw it, but I think it happened on Friday that they sent it to us.
I mean, I, yeah, I just, I mean, we're aware of it, so, I mean, I think, I was gonna check it tonight.
I just did what it was and I, I'd heard about it, so I at least felt like if someone did come in, I would not be like, what the hell?
Yeah, I mean, I would.
Are we doing the trainings, like, are we doing a lesson?
I mean, I'm not sure, I thought they had like a, I was gonna check tonight and I didn't get a chance, so I thought they, one of the emails said they had a, a frequently asked questions thing on it somewhere too, but.
I thought, was it the one that's this Friday or did it happen last Friday?
I think it was last Friday, yeah, but just so, I mean, it'll, it'll affect you too, you know, if somebody comes in, it'll be anywhere off this. They got a right to film anything not, you know, private.
Not the bathroom.
Not the, yeah, yeah, or like open folders and, you know, I, I mean, I think, I didn't look through it, but I think that's pretty much the gist is somebody can come in, perhaps Kingdom Access TV could tell us better. The rights and regulations on that, but, okay, I just, I think of you guys when I see that coming from BLTC, cause it's you guys that will have to.
Schmush could tell us what they do. Yeah. Good. So, alright, Lisa?
Thank you, Lisa.
Town card.
Okay, um, I was gonna start with a few things and then get to the articles. The view I just went here has, sorry, and they quickly put through all this, a bunch of stuff, but one of them pertaining to us is, believe it or not, the House has approved extending Australian ballot voting at this Select Board, so cheers.
Oh, really?
And moving the date, yeah, to this year, all the way through till June or July of 2024.
Isn't it a little late to do that at this point? Cause most people are approving warnings already, like.
That's when they rush it through.
But if it's not approved, then.
That's interesting.
But that's just what sign, oh, that, pretty good, I could do that.
Which we're not doing Australian ballot, so.
But the other thing too was, I haven't seen it officially, but it also was including the Northeast Kingdom Waste Budget Vote. You know how the last couple of years, they let their board approve it and they're busted in the vote and I think that's gonna happen again.
Yeah. They usually just update us.
Well, we have a little ballot that nobody gives their hands, if you want, lower.
I think, like, when it happened before, the concept, the theory behind it is Tim votes for us, right? So if we have a problem, then we gotta bring it to Tim and, yeah. Is Kitty still the alternative?
Yeah, I don't know.
Is she doing it, is she still doing something?
But, yeah, so I, that will.
But yeah, so I, that looks like that's gonna go through again, because that won't be happening that day.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, we did that notary training, and I did the town meeting training again, nothing new. Goes over the, the articles in the morning and shows, or who knows what's on it, or not on it, so gave you guys your copy of what we wanted for articles.
Right.
So it's pretty much, you don't have to change, so we put a number there at the bottom from the last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Here it goes. So, you know, it's all the standard stuff that either has to be there, needs to be there.
Do we? We don't need to have a dollar amount before establishing reserve funds?
So that's the.
That's the second one, so you, you have one.
Oh, okay.
They recommend doing it.
That way, so that it's not all.
All alone.
Yeah.
And do we need to go over this?
If they say, if it votes no, then moderator would just move the next article, so we don't have to putting the last.
So aren't, aren't you, Article five would then, i- if Article is voted down, Article five would just be null, basically.
Right, so do we need to go, we don't make a motion to approve them and?
Not that I have seen.
Books.
And then, I, I've already reviewed them anyways, and they look fine, I mean.
The biggest change from last year is what we've already discussed, which is that the budget's gonna be one article, not two separate articles, um, which is the decision of the select board.
Correct.
To make, and we've made that decision, so.
So I'm in, I'm in favor of the articles, how they're written.
Yeah, looks good to me.
Looks good.
Um, the, you know, we need the two school board, number one, we never got filled in, that was, you know, moved out of town.
Yep, and then an additional, who's, who's up for, is there somebody on this?
So Sandra Woodworth is the one that took the place of the lady who was gone the year before, so she took the rest of her term, so now she can be voted in if she wants, for the three year term.
That's right.
Okay, so that's the three.
And then we need another person to do the one year rest of the term for Sarah Dennis, who moved out of town.
Correct, okay.
And then I talked with the library trustees, and that's what they say, the.
Okay.
How many, five, six, seven?
Two, we're in it. Um, the other.
What was the other?
Do you have a letter token?
We, yeah, we can do that now, that's fine.
First of all.
Which we opened, yeah, we have a resignation from the, um, cemetery, I don't have the letter, but.
See it now.
We have a letter from.
It's in the folder.
Mark Schellberg, this week, that's resigning on the cemetery commission.
Yep. And was this, is this the end of his three year term?
No, so he's listed as the one year.
So that was the one.
Here in Europe.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's in the poll.
Oh, no, it's not the envelope.
Not the envelope.
He was, he looked in the envelope, but we opened the envelope this week and had.
That was what was in there.
That was what was in there.
So that's the one year term, and then, yeah, Carol Snack is up for with three year term.
Gotcha.
Right, so it'll be done this year.
So.
So it's a lot of one year, three year, one year, three year, only one year.
Right, and we thank Mark for his time being on the board and commission, appreciate that.
Yep.
So, um, so that was the articles, and now you were, it's really should have been, we ran the fund balance, the sheet I gave you.
Oh, which, which I have reviewed that too, is what to be the fund balance, which was sixty-four thousand in there, which, how much was for town and?
Fifty off the general fund and the fourteen off the highway.
Okay.
I know you, last time talked about using roughly sixty-six or?
We had really, we just had a rough number in there.
Right, and we weren't sure about the exact figure, so that increase from twenty twenty budget to twenty point three's budget is the sixty thousand eight fifty-one, they're in the top right.
Yep.
Correct.
So.
Which is up five percent.
Yep.
And then, you know, I put some of those bigger items in to give you the total of the thirty, and that left another thirty for all the other lines, so.
Which are actually only up two and a half percent, the five percent is the total with what we can't even control for.
That's right.
Yeah, for contracts.
Correct. They emailed contract, they're not, it's increased significantly.
Actually, only up two and a half percent per town, town budget.
Yeah.
For regular budget stuff.
For regular budget stuff, exactly.
So then the difference now on the bottom left is, you know, twenty twenty-two, you chose to use a hundred thousand, so we had to raise in taxes to seven hundred ninety-seven. Twenty twenty-three, if you choose them to use sixty-four thousand, it's eight hundred eighty-nine thousand to raise in taxes, so it's an increase of ninety-two thousand dollars. That would be raised in taxes.
From last year. Correct.
That's if we use the sixty-four thousand.
Right, but I wouldn't use more than, we don't wanna use too much, because then next year, you could mess this up for next year.
Have a bigger jump.
So, jump, right, so that seemed like a fair number, is what we had decided, we had talked to them.
Yeah.
I mean.
But, yeah, trying to offset the increase was the.
Right.
Which, I mean, we can offset the increase, but we're still gonna have to raise more taxes.
Yeah, correct.
I'm just trying to understand that now, I guess.
Not as much more though.
No.
If we didn't, see, if, yeah, if we didn't put, use this, then that sixty-four was added on to that.
Cor- correct, or what, you know, yeah, so.
So the budget.
But you're trying to figure out why you still.
The budget's up sixty thousand.
And we're using thirty-six thousand less fund balance, so there's your money.
Gotcha.
Budget's up.
So if we use, but if we use the sixty-four, this ninety-two should be less, right?
No, that is gonna be two.
That is ninety-two.
So.
Because think of it, so we didn't use thirty-six thousand of the fund, we didn't use the hundred thousand, so sixty-four to a hundred is thirty-six thousand.
Correct.
Plus the increase of sixty thousand to the budget, there's roughly ninety-six thousand increase.
Gotcha.
That's where you get that.
So in order for us to, in, in order for us to truly offset the budget, we'd have to do almost a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars of fund balance.
Right, and we wouldn't really wanna do that, because if it messes up for next year, we don't know what things are gonna be up for next year, which I'm sure they'll go down by next year.
Well, if you saw the town, the actual taxes for town highway were less this year.
Yeah.
Using that hundred thousand, so in a sense, if maybe only seventy thousand was used, the taxes would have just gone little, and then that little to this wouldn't be as big.
Yeah.
You know, you would have a smaller gap that we'd be feeling right now, now we're making up.
And what did we say the fund balance was, I can't remember.
Three seventy.
Well, we're using some of that.
Which actually doesn't include the highway, so really it's like four hundred thousand.
But are we using some of that for drainage project also?
Well, then you're gonna take the one fifty out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not really, it's like half of that. Well, it wasn't half of that, I guess, but.
That's the, that's the challenging part of the fund balance.
So it's like four hundred and ten, take out one fifty.
Three sixty.
Two sixty. So then we're using sixty, so.
Sixteen, seventy-two.
We'll have a hundred, let's say eighty thousand dollars.
Leftover.
Leftover, well, yeah.
So the next year could use another sixty, seventy, eighty, and the next year.
Sixty, seventy, right, 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 right.
Get that down.
You know, as long as, like this year, we talked about last time, eighty thousand got used out of the fund balance, so that was good, our intention was to use them, so if that keeps happening. Every year, we're still gonna make some fund balance, but then we're using more than we're making.
Right.
So I think it will help us keep.
Keeps us a bit positive versus in the name.
Steady decline without getting rid of it all at once.
Right.
Which is, you know, I think that's what we wanna do, but at the same time, you know, for raising taxes, you know, it's gonna, gonna be more, we just have to.
Well, I mean, next year, maybe we do one, I mean, one next year is that we can use a fund balance at level now, this year they went up, next year they will.
Well, but I mean, that's the reality of, of the inflation we're dealing with, and the fact that we've got, you know, again, thirty thousand dollars of that is, is, you know. Twenty-five thousand of that is increases in contracts, our essential contracts from town, I mean, that's.
Which, and everything's going up, Bernie was just speaking, just giving a big speech, and everybody's working hard, but they're not making enough money, they're going behind.
Right, yeah.
Because inflation and.
Yep, and that's, I mean, that, again, thirty, thirty thousand dollars specifically in the budget increases related to inflation, I mean, directly, directly impacting our budget from inflation that we. We don't really have control over, I mean, for all intents and purposes, we can't do anything.
So we're.
I mean, if that's, you know, the sixty-four thousand, you're just distributing.
Well, we had, like, we had kinda roughed that decision in it anyways.
I mean, and now, now you're seeing.
And that's the real number now, so.
Ninety-two thousand, so you could go, have to use eighty thousand fund balance on the, across the level.
Well, we kinda just said, well, we talked about just kinda leveling it out, whatever, versus get too carried away with it, so, we'll see, we'll figure a number.
Yeah, it, we need to ease, ease in, you know, ease ourselves and ease the, you know, taxpayers into increases in the, in the.
Right.
Because of tax rate, because it's, it's coming, I mean, we use, the thing is, is we use all, like, what we've talked about is, we use all of the fund balance rapidly over the course of, you know, the next three years, two years. And taxes are gonna jump.
Big time.
Exactly, which is gonna be tough, tough for people to, to swallow.
Tough for a board, is that?
I get it.
Yeah, depending on who's on the board.
So I think all the, although we need to, you know, if you look, you know, if you look at.
Sixty-four seems like a fair number, I mean, it's a five percent increase in, oh.
I mean, you're taking away the budget increase, just, like you said, it's just gonna be harder.
We're just offsetting our increases this year, it's just, fund balance usage is not, you know, the reality is, we don't have the fund balance, and, and we shouldn't really have the fund balance. But, you know, we don't have the fund balance that we had three years ago to offset the taxes and keep it.
Which isn't really the right way to do it, I mean, at the end of the day, it's, that's not.
Yeah, well, this is a good way, just in the next even five years, to use roughly around that month, that amount every year, to just all.
So do we need to, do we need to make a, a motion on that?
I'll, I'll move it, yeah, I'll make a motion to use sixty-four thousand dollars of the fund balance to offset, uh, the amount raised by taxes for twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. There it be.
And I believe that's all we have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we already did Assistant Assessor, fire fast.
Uh, I'll address that PO that Brenda had, so the FAST squad, head of service Bren Brooly had, um, picked up a new dealer for oxygen tanks. So, um, the one that we had been using was HON, and they had to actually physically drive the bottles down, um, to get them refilled. Uh, the, then she wants to switch to main oxy, I don't know if they deliver it, your, if you have them there.
They, they used to, they don't anymore, they don't come.
Yeah, we had it at the garage, too, you could have.
You can't get them.
Yeah.
You have to go, we have to pick everything up down to, to Woodsville now, easy steel is, is the deal.
I thought she said they were dropping off to the town garage still, main oxy, so, but they, I think, yeah, I think, but the idea is they'll pick up. Because they're coming into town once a week, she said, so it was five hundred and eighty-four.
Which if they're still coming here, why can't?
Well, I think they do, because I can't look at the garage that will get.
They'll deliver stuff.
Whatever, we don't have all that stock anymore, no more drop, what's that called, drop sites?
Some, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what we were, was a drop site, you know.
So that, like, if I had a bottle at the house, I could bring it to our garage and.
How does that, how does that?
Drop tire on them.
So is it more to do that, or is it less, or?
Which, I get no CEO to do it.
So it's, I don't believe it's more, it's for a three year contract.
Oh, okay.
So it's a one time, well, one time for three years of five ninety-four.
Oh, that's okay.
No, and so it's, uh, it'll be twenty-one dollars thirty cents every time you fill a bottle, um, this is the charge, because they're coming filled already. So, and I asked her, I said, you got the money for it, she said in her medical supply line budget, so.
Yeah.
I don't see any problems with.
So when you run out, you just call them and they come and swap them in?
And yes, and, and then, well, the, when they come, that week.
Oh, so they're still stopping.
Stopping, yeah, I believe so, um, but the other advantage to that is, it's the same distributor that Woodsville Ambulance uses. So if we were in a pinch, we could get a bottle off of Woodsville Ambulance to hold over for a week, so, um, and which is another reason to switch, because we didn't have interchangeable with those guys, so. Um, I don't, it's not gonna be a jump anywhere in the budget.
No, I mean, I think it's a, looks like it's a solid deal, and we're gonna be able to not have to drive all the way to HON to.
Yeah.
Replace bottles, so that, that makes sense.
Okay, good, is that?
Do we need to sign the contract?
That's all I had for that, just bring that up at this time, seemed like the most appropriate time, so you guys knew what the situation was.
Good, thank you, Aaron.
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Constable, we heard anything from Mark? He got his new, well, I played with it in the office there, the new.
Dog snare.
Dog snare. Nobody wanted to try it.
Who are you sneering in the office?
Nobody wanted, well, good, good. Try it out, so we have that, so that's good.
I don't know, this Friday, I found my garage, so he was just stopped in this week, so we have to.
They were busy cleaning up the, the house this year, last week.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I think it's all cleaned up.
Yeah, I, I heard it was all, just all cleaned up over there, yeah.
And when's the, when's the rabies clinic?
I haven't heard from them yet, that's usually March around sixteen, seventeen, March.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay.
Probably a whole week, I haven't heard, yeah.
Yep.
So that started too, I guess, it's like, oh, had a few.
Yeah, yeah.
Like three so far.
Good. All right.
Okay.
Uh, anything on library that we've heard, or no, any updates?
Nope.
Okay, zoning administrator, we heard, do you have talked to Dan, or anything?
Yeah, I've talked to Dan, moving about that PNC, and, um, I don't know, we have a couple, stuff is ongoing.
Okay.
Building's slowed down, or?
Yeah.
Seems like, of course, it's a slow time of year for building anyway.
I'd like to see Dan, I'd like to, if he's.
Yeah, he knows we're gonna come today, but.
All right, well, sometime.
I'll tell him, did you miss him?
We do, we miss him, yeah.
Yeah.
No, he, he's working hard, he's, he had, um, someone had a question about a cell phone tower possibility coming into town, so he's dealing with that.
Was there, I, I, he had, we had talked about that a while, you know, but. Is there any progress on that?
I don't think he's heard anymore, I think a, a property owner, you know, just had some questions, so he's handling that.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be against it, but, you know, especially, it's something we don't have in the town, it'd be good to understand what the, you know, tax, tax implications are gonna be for that.
Yeah, and the process too, I can't believe it's very quick.
No, I don't know, I mean, they just put one up in Wells River, a couple of months.
We don't know how long they would be doing.
That's true.
Yeah, I'm sure it's been quite a process to get to that point, right.
I think, I think we asked them, I think I asked them, and it does trigger act two fifty or something like that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, uh, you, I did see it today for a little bit, it comes along.
Did he say it was a good, dog took her that, we picked up?
He did open it, Tristan, it was there, but it looked, it looked better than I thought it would look.
Yeah, but she didn't, I'm scared, I was gonna try it, and she wanted to make sure it protected, you know.
I wanted to make sure it was coated, you know.
Seemed good. Okay, good, uh, health officer, what are we doing on health officer, are you still?
I don't know, you're the health officer.
I didn't get re sworn in for that.
You didn't see that, the fine print?
No, uh, we're still looking for health officer. We're still looking for a health officer.
It's one of those, if you don't have it, it's the select board chair.
We don't have it, it's all automatically.
Yeah.
Did you get that badge?
No, nothing to. No, nothing to report on.
Yeah, I've got it at home.
You best be given it.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll drop it off later.
So I don't know if I said, I know you're not in anymore, but that last dog bite, Dan took care of that, that actually was a report.
Oh, okay, there was a report that needed to be done, okay.
He went, he talked with the dog owner, and that's the whole story, still, I mean, nothing really happens, I mean, he has to, you have to keep the dog kind of away from anyone for like ten days, and then we just keep a report in the file, but he did have to fill out the whole bottom of that, so.
Do you think he'd be interested in taking back over as the primary's health officer?
Please.
I, I'll find issues to him, but I have.
I think he got sour, I think he just, he got a sour taste with the whole goat situation, and it seems to have resolved.
Yeah, blame him, but.
Oh, yeah, can't blame him either, so, but anyway.
Yeah, I mean, he, he, it was good that he took care of that, though.
It was, yeah.
Alright, alright. Okay, maintenance. Okay, nothing good, I T.
Carrie's, um, email, when she sends an email, bounce is back, so her email hasn't been working today, so I learned that Gary, he's gonna stop by tonight.
Just, speaking of I T, this isn't really, but did we ever hear anything back from, um, secretary who's, not, not one word? Nothing. That's interesting, okay.
Yeah, at some point today, it might, you know, just, sent, or just bounces back to me, it says they detected spam, won't let go first, I tried it all different ways, without attachments, with words written.
I got something too, in the town email from some, like, pen pal thing, why do we have so much trouble with our town email? Like, I don't have that trouble with our other emails, why?
Who believes that?
Yeah, so, I mean, I imagine there's probably a bot that runs and looks for public municipal, you know, and it's just phishing.
What do we pay for an email? Cause we, honestly, I feel like.
Take anything.
It may be something worth us exploring with, because I, I'll be honest, it's not a very secure platform for email, I mean, I get.
But you have talked about it, whether it's a dot org or dot gov.
Yeah, eight of ten emails I get are spam emails at this point.
We should do some, I don't know if you guys get, I get one that's full Chinese, right?
No, I don't like that.
No, I get the, I get the, I'm the, I'm the king of Sudan and.
Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna send you my money.
And I got an email supposedly from you saying, remember, and this, and it was.
I got an email from Carrie and Harold, said, before you process payroll, please, I wanna change my bank account.
So, um.
That's what I get, wait, I had one of the good things.
I, I don't know, I mean, with the new website that we just upgraded, the town website too, is it possible for us to?
They do offer, I believe, for them.
It, maybe that's something that we can explore to, cause I, I mean, it is a, just knowing from different organizations, I've been a part of, you know, different companies I've worked for. Email is a, is a soft target right now for phishing and scams, and I'd hate for the town to get hacked and then we're rolling through a big issue there, cause, you know, EarthLink isn't very secure, but, anyway, something to think about.
Planning commission, nothing?
So you guys got all those zoning bylaws that we have to put on our next meeting, you need to approve them and then set a meeting, a public meeting on them. And I think we could do that even before a regular meeting. You know, half hour before, half the public meeting.
Right, okay.
But I know that's what they're waiting on.
So next meeting, we need to.
Put that in the agenda.
Yeah, the, the first of February, one February. Okay.
So when, did you say, better than one?
First of February, first of February.
Well, I'll, I'll double check, if you guys have to approve it and then the next meeting, we have the.
Good for sure. What's our second meeting, what's the date of our second meeting?
Fourteenth? Fifteenth?
Okay, I'll be here.
Yeah, fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yeah, fifteen, okay, I'll be here, no problem.
We may have a public meeting fifteen, if we have to.
Yeah, do that at five thirty.
Okay.
Does that change anything?
We could do it the day before, I'm sure a lot of people will be looking for something to do with that.
Oh, that's great. That's great.
Sounds free.
So, yeah, that's, that's all I have for that, I know they had a meeting last night. I think it is, looks, they're doing great work.
Okay, good, perfect, open to public, other business.
Um, just to review the, the letter we put together.
Oh, yeah, the, um, you put together and then we were gonna.
Yeah, if there's anything you guys want, I mean, I'll email this to you both too, and so we can, you can edit it if you want to, but.
I'd rather read it than screen, run through it like I'm right here.
Yeah, I, uh, I tried to include some information about our grant, the grant funding that you received. Okay, I might've went a little overboard on that, but you let me know and I'll.
I don't think so.
Cut back, it's just.
Hard to have too much information unless it's just. We'll look at that. Thank you for putting that together, Zach.
Yeah, thank you, Zach.
If there's anything you think needs to be changed, we can change, we just have to have it to Lisa for final approval on the twenty sixth, right?
Midnight, Sunday.
We'll bring it in and put it in the stack.
It'll just slide in.
Uh, is there anything else we need to talk about, or?
Just agenda, set agenda, and.
Set agenda.
I'd just make sure we have the zoning bylaws on.
Zoning by.
The next, approve zoning bylaws for the next.
If anyone needs a copy of that to look at, you know.
I'd have.
I need a copy of it.
I'll take a copy as well.
Oh, the zoning bylaws, the updated zoning bylaws?
Yeah, I'd take a copy of it, it's good, okay.
Do you want it in the folder?
Yeah, I'll just prepare the copies for folder.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Sounds good.
And is that it for select board, uh, agenda for next?
Um, Carrie, just one more thing, Carrie and I talked about, you know, maybe trying to meet with you guys, um, before the, um, town meeting, just to refresh how things go.
Yep, yep.
You know, we haven't had a, uh, board chat meeting in a while.
Town, in person one in a while.
Couple of years, right?
Yeah, so we can get that, and I did talk to Brett Dayver, he's, you know, planning to run the moderator again, and he's even taking the moderators' refresh reports, I think it's happening in the next couple of weeks.
Good.
Very good, yep, no, that would be good to review how that needs to be officiated, handled, or otherwise, so, yep.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Um, I was gonna say too, maybe, I'm gonna take a look at the P A system at some point, cause I know a lot, well, we, a couple of meetings, we tried to set it up and connect it in with, you know, the cameras and stuff, it didn't work, so I'm gonna look at it.
Yep.
See if we can figure it out, so, maybe that, maybe the weekend before town meeting or something, but.
Yeah, try that Monday, I'll, I'll set up.
Gotcha, yeah.
Okay, good, uh, we can sign that, orders after, so motion to adjourn, make a motion to adjourn. I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Couple of these don't have bags in here.
First meeting, we're done in an hour there, pretty, yeah, well, it was pretty simple.
Couple of these things in here don't have, uh, maybe not, maybe that's it, maybe.